Good evening. I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley. Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and matter pertaining to an individual student. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion carries. Good evening. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. We do not have any recognitions this evening, but I would like to have a moment of silence. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge two separate and tragic incidents that have taken the lives of three young people in our community in the past few weeks. These senseless deaths eliminated the potential for the bright futures and successes we are able to create so often. I ask that you join me in a moment of silence to honor these individuals. Thank you. Our thoughts are with their families and friends, as well as our community and our first responders who work diligently to protect us all. So, thank you. Before we go to the public comments, I would like to read our mission statement, because I think it's very important. Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. All right, then that takes us to our public comments. And... The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Tenifer. So our first person to speak is Kathy Riesberg.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riesberg, and as a taxpayer for over forty-five years in this community, I stand here tonight as a member of the League of Women Voters, Palatine Area, and speak not on behalf of the League, but simply as a citizen who loves this country like all of you and who supports our democracy. I want to thank you, the District 211 Board and the District 211 Social Studies Staff, for what you are doing, according to your District 211 Curriculum Guide, to develop critically engaged citizens that can contribute to a democratic society through the implementation of the Illinois State mandated civics curriculum. And that is why I'm excited to be here today and talk about what I recently learned, something that you most likely already know quite a bit about. Included in the Illinois Senate Bill 825, the bill that further expanded voting protections for all Illinois residents and that Governor J.B. Pritzker signed on August 17th, 2021, is a provision that directly impacts all high school students in Illinois. This relatively new election law, according to the August 18th, 2023 Back-to-School Voting Reminders, provided by the League of Women Voters Illinois on their website, requires the State Board of Elections to prepare a one-page document explaining the voter registration process that every high school must provide for its students. This can be done electronically. An additional reminder provided by the League of Women Voters Illinois is that Illinois Election Reform Bill, Senate Bill 2123, signed into law by Governor J.B. Pritzker on August 4th, 2023, allows sixteen-year-olds to pre-register to vote with the registration held in abeyance until they are of voting age. This change goes into effect January 1st, 2024. A final reminder from League of Women Voters Illinois states, remember, seventeen-year-olds can register and vote in the primary election on March 19th, 2024, if they'll be eighteen by the general election on November 5th, 2024. So, my thanks to you for what you've already done to create new generations of involved, engaged citizens, and for what you're doing this school year to ensure that all of our current students do receive the information needed, information that is required by law, to help them fulfill their civic duty by registering to vote and using their voice at the polls as soon as they're eligible to do so. I do have copies of the materials right here. Registering to Vote in Illinois, and your vote is your voice, sent out to all high school superintendents by the Illinois State Board of Elections, and also a copy of the League of Women Voters Illinois Back-to-School Voting Reminders, and we'll leave them here tonight. There is no doubt in my mind that the majority of folks in this room and in this community stand with you and are grateful for what you are doing to ensure that the safety and wellness of the diverse student body is foremost in your minds, and that equity, inclusion, and freedom to learn are always at the center of a District 211 education. And I'm hopeful the majority of folks in this room believe, as I sense that most of you do too as board members, that the strength and continuation of our democracy depends on the active participation of all eligible voters, including those among our District 211 student population who register and who show up to vote in each and every election throughout their entire lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Andy John Calcunis from Palatine Township.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. My name is Andy John Calcunos from Palatine Township, and I'm honored to serve as your Palatine Township Supervisor. Some people don't know what Palatine Township does and how the townships in Illinois serve people. We have approximately one hundred and fifteen thousand residents in Palatine Township. We encompass thirty-six square miles of territory. On the southern border, it's Algonquin Road. On the northern border, it's Lake Cook Road. On the eastern border, it's our future Bear Stadium on New Wilkie. On the western border, it'll be roughly Huntington Boulevard. We successfully partner, better than ever, with eight municipalities: Palatine Inverness, Hoffman Estates, Barrington, South Barrington, Arlington Heights, Rowley Meadows, Schaumburg. As many of you have heard, we now offer best-in-class social services, and we contract out with agencies to assist individuals and families in overcoming barriers to a better life. Our core services in township government are Assessor's Office, which lowers property taxes, filing homeowners exemptions, appeals at no cost; road districts, which do snow removal, road repair, compost, and so forth for unincorporated areas mainly, but we have intergovernmental agreements with all of our municipal partners. We also have a primary focus of Food Pantry, serving four hundred families in this region. This is an all-time high, and many of you are aware of. And I want to thank everyone in the room, in particular, some of the folks right behind me. The school districts are big supporters of Food Pantry, and it's an enormous, enormous help. I see the faces come through the township, and it really is an impact. I welcome you to volunteer. Transportation, seniors and disabled. We take people to dialysis, lifesaving services. People don't know that. People need a ride, we take them there. We stayed open during COVID. We provided those services. We drove food bags to people that were homebound. We provided that service. Outreach. We just provided eleven hundred full backpacks. Remember, this was limited to up to freshmen, sophomores, and for the last two years, we've expanded that to up to the senior grade. Outreach does obviously holiday programs, and it really is countless, the programs that we do. General assistance, emergency assistance, such as our collaborative response to the Red Cross and with POC and Red Cross to the Dundee Corridor, fire disaster, rental assistance, senior services, domestic battery, emergency shelter. We have relationships with multiple hotels in the region to give us discounted rates and provide anonymous shelter for families in domestic situations with oftentimes single-parent households and extended family that needs shelter. Our police departments love us. Our fire departments depend on us, and the residents sometimes don't have a place to turn. Many of you know this. More don't know this. So we appreciate your support of the townships, and I want to share a couple things more tonight, reason why I'm here. There's a few generous individuals that don't want to be named.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you for the warning. That provided iPad insurance funds for the students of the school district. Over a hundred forty students needed iPad insurance to help defray the costs to their parents and families to provide for gas, medicine, and so forth during inflationary times. So we want to thank those donors, the volunteers, and the incredible and resilient staff of the township. And I'm here to present the check tonight to provide the full coverage of the insurance cost for the iPad insurance for the students of the school district, and I thank all of you for your service. I want to thank all of you for your service tonight. And who may I present the check to? All right, here we go.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that will take us to our next item, and our next item is to open a public hearing. And that is in accordance with Section 5-17-1.3 of the Illinois School Code. Cash balances are reported in Items 7.C and 9.A of tonight's meeting agenda, and the public hearing on the 2023-2024 Budget of Township High School District 211 is now open. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, it's a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we are open for a hearing from anyone here in our audience. I did not have anyone signed up, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in regards to the budget? Okay. Seeing none, then the next recommended action is that the public hearing on the 2023-2024 Budget of Township High School District 211 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, again, it's a voice vote, so all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, then that will take us to our presentations, and I welcome our principals. All right, before our principals begin, I would like to thank you for the tremendous job that you do and everything that's involved in your schools. It's not an easy task, leading all the students, all the staff, all the teachers, all the parents, everything that you're faced with on a daily basis. And you all do a tremendous job and are truly, truly appreciated. We probably don't tell you that enough, because we truly value you, and I think it's important that you know. And thank you so much for being here and for working with our students, working with everyone in the community. So, thank you, and I look forward to the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smol.
Each year, the leadership team of our district evaluates our success towards achieving our goals. This year represents the second year of a five-year tracking system for the District 211 academic goals. These goals are used to continue to set a culture of high expectations, examine data for gaps in achievement to guide change, and help students prepare for all their post-secondary choices. Tonight is my pleasure to introduce to you the group of District 211 administrators who lead our schools. I'm extremely proud of this team and the challenges they work through for continual improvement at our school. Tonight, we have Assistant Superintendent Joshua Shoemaker, Principal from Palatine High School, Tony Medina, Principal of Fremont High School, Mark Langer, Principal of Conant High School, Julie Novak, Principal of Schaumburg High School, Brian Harland, and Principal of Hoffman Estates High School, Michael Arthur. I want to thank you also for what you do and the amazing things that you do that we don't see on a daily basis, but I know is happening at your school for our students, our staff, and our families.
Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. This mission statement serves to guide the priorities, programs, and practices for our district staff as we seek to provide extraordinary opportunities, innovative teaching, and exceptional learning to all the students from our community. The district academic goals serve as performance measures through which we can analyze the strengths of our systems as well as our opportunities for growth. They also serve as an indicator of what matters most to our students, staff, and community. We believe that a culture of high expectations that is clearly communicated to our students and parents is fundamental to creating and fostering the most effective school environment. Our goals were developed with a holistic, comprehensive, and coordinated approach to ensure that every District 211 student is prepared with the skills, the knowledge, and the experiences for success after high school. The goals mirror our state accountability measures and also parallel what we know from both educational research and the experiences of our students in our schools and our community. We know that student learning is complexed and nuanced and is also affected by a myriad of factors. We have planned for this in the construction of these goals, as we know that our diverse students come from many different backgrounds and home experiences. The multiple components of each goal allow individual students to demonstrate performance in different ways while still providing overall accountability as a school and a district. The goals are structured as an overarching goal statement that describes both what we desire and what we expect from our students. Because of the diversity of our school community, each overarching goal can be achieved through multiple measures. The use of multiple sources of evidence gathered at different times during the school year and across, within and across, different areas of performance allows a clearer representation of what student success looks like in District 211. Tonight, we will present you the goal performance for the school year 2022-2023. Our school staff has worked exceptionally hard over the course of the 22-23 school year to establish a sense of belonging in our classrooms and our school communities, to foster academic curiosity and growth, and to provide intensive interventions while expertly navigating the context of the world that our students live in today. The devotion of our staff allowed us to not only reach the estimated yearly targets for our goals, but also to exceed our own expectations for student performance in the multiple facets of the high school experience. While the report you were provided has multiple data points, tonight's presentation is about the humans behind the data. We know that each number represents one of our students and want to tell you the stories behind the numbers. Those that includes programs, that include staff members, and student performance that you won't see in a report. Tonight, you will hear these stories from the leaders that organize and facilitate learning, connection, and belonging. Each one will explain the goal, the overall district performance, and then share information about what happened during the 22-23 school year, but also perhaps more importantly, what we have learned and how we will move forward into this year to achieve even higher levels of success. Starting us off tonight is Principal of Conant High School, Julie Novak.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Students have the opportunity to demonstrate attainment of the first goal, student involvement, in multiple ways. This is because we honor the differing needs of our students and their families. The indicators are meeting and/or exceeding the yearly attendance threshold, specifically ninety percent attendance during freshman and sophomore year and ninety-five percent attendance during junior and senior years, which correlates with Harper-Promess requirements. Other indicators include participation in activities and athletics, community service, employment, and internships. During the 22-23 school year, ninety-three percent of District 211 students met a performance indicator toward the goal of student involvement. This is a seven percent increase from the year prior. While this is certainly something to celebrate, there are some challenges within this measure specifically related to student attendance. Last year, Conant High School realized the exact same overall goal performance for student involvement as the district at ninety-three percent. This reflected an overall four percent increase from the year prior. Unfortunately, we are not immune to what is a national challenge of supporting the need for regular school attendance. While sixty-nine percent of Conant students met attendance indicators, thirty-one percent of students did not. For Conant, this represented a decrease of eight percent from the previous year, which drew our concern. A deeper look at Conant students, who did not meet the indicator, reflected some important takeaways. Number one, a large majority of students who did not achieve the indicator were actually quite close to the threshold, and most of these students use four to five mental health days that are provided to them, but are also reflected as absences in our reporting procedures. Number two, the number of students who were chronically absent, which the Illinois State Board of Education indicates as missing more than eighteen days of school, were few and were a focus of our student support teams throughout last year. Early this year, we focused our efforts on communication about the importance of regular school attendance. While this may seem like a small step, it has certainly given pause to students and parents when making decisions about school attendance. We believe this will have an impact on those close to meeting the indicator. This year, we are also investigated in creating attendance support plans that are positive and asset-based. A major goal of the plan is to help students find joy in their day. Many of these plans also include a goal for students to become involved at Conant or in their local community. Last year, seventy-five percent of students at Conant High School participated in an activity or sport. We know that when students are invited to participate, they're much more likely to give it a try. Thus, we focused on the power of being invited, asking our students and staff to extend personal invitations to join their groups. Last year, we also made a decision to dedicate a room to serve as the Student Activities Room. Its location is ideal, right across from the cafeteria. The Activity Room provides a common meeting space, allows our sponsors to share materials, post their events, and most importantly, connect with students on a very regular basis. Throughout the year, activities offered highlighted such events as Drama Club's karaoke event, an Uno competition, our School of Rock's concert series, Latinos Unidos Loteria, a game similar to Bingo, and our Wellness Club sponsoring a finals de-stress event, which included a visit from Comfort Dogs. Essentially, there was something to do in the Activities Room almost every day. We found that this provided a great source of joy to our students and helped them connect to our activities. Student participation in school attendance is a symbiotic relationship. We know this, and we want to capitalize on it. This year, Mrs. Ardell, our Assistant Principal, reimagined our traditional activity fair. We offered students an activity showcase. Instead of a one-day event, students were able to sample activities during a two-week-long experience. The showcase allowed students more opportunities to know about activities, and most importantly, to be invited. Some of our newest clubs include Ukrainian Club, Hip-Hop Club, and Girl Club. Some of our most popular clubs include Finance Club, Latinos Unidos, Cougar Crazies, and Coding Club. We have already realized an increase in attendance for many of our activities and sports. I will end with a brief story that reflects the power of being invited and finding joy. During the 21-22 school year, I had an experience with a freshman student I will call Tony. Tony was at the Hoffman-Conant game, I believe you were there, I remember seeing you there, Mr. Rosenbloom, with a group of friends from another school in another district. Tony and his friends were up to no good. When I approached them to redirect them, I was greeted with a greeting that was a hand gesture that principals hoped to not see. The following Monday, I found Tony, and we spent some time talking about what happened. I learned that Tony has a younger sibling who he's responsible for after school, and while he really doesn't agree with all of his friends' choices, it's who he knows. I learned that Tony loves sports and is a stats guy. We had the Michael Jordan-LeBron debate, and while we disagreed, I knew that my next steps were to connect him to our broadcast club and Mr. Shrek, who immediately invited Tony to the activity and eventually broadcast class. I want to be clear, the story isn't about me. It's a story about the value of connecting students to what brings them joy. This year, Tony is on our football field as the lead student broadcaster. His hands are still busy, but they're shaking hands with the peers and local reporters before they begin their broadcast. Tony and I don't interact very often. I'm not an important person in his life. It's his peer, sponsor, and connection to what he loves and to school that brings him joy. That's our goal for every student. Now, Mr. Harland will speak about academic growth.
Thank you, Julie. Four different indicators are monitored to gauge success on District Goal Number Two, which is academic growth. These include the meeting of all course critical learning standards, meeting grade point average thresholds, successfully meeting grade point average thresholds, successfully enrolling in and completing an AP or dual-credit course, and successfully enrolling in and completing accelerated coursework. Across the district, the goal for academic growth improved point-eight percent from eighty-six point three percent in the 21-22 school year to eighty-seven point one percent in the 22-23 school year. District-wide, growth occurred across all four indicators for this goal. There were two areas of note at Schaumburg High School. The first is a change in CLS performance by seven point eight percent. The growth shown is a positive indicator that students are adjusting to life after COVID-19 disruptions. As you know, during the COVID-19 school disruptions, our priorities shifted as we were asked to focus on essential learning targets for each course. As we were transitioning out of the pandemic last year, each department took the time to reevaluate the course critical learning standards and in turn, the assessments that measure learning. This involved a lengthy process that has been continuing on this school year. Another area I'd like to highlight at Schaumburg High School is the growth demonstrated in the area of enrollment and successful completion of a dual-credit course. During the 21-22 school year, forty-nine percent of students at SHS enrolled in an AP or dual-credit course and completed the course this year higher. This number increased to fifty-four point four percent. As we dove deeper into the district goal, we realized that this was in part due to a large increase in the students taking dual-credit offerings at Schaumburg High School last year. During the 21-22 school year, Schaumburg High School had six hundred and seventy-seven different students enroll in a dual-credit course. This increased to eight hundred and fifty-five students last year, an increase of twenty-six point two percent. I'd like to take a moment to expand upon this increase in dual-credit enrollment at Schaumburg High School. It goes without saying that dual-credit courses afford students the opportunity to get ahead on their college credits, in turn, setting up our students for success after high school, not to mention resulting in a huge financial boost for families that need it as they save money on future tuition. money on future tuition. The increase at Schaumburg High School was not the singular effort of any one person, but rather a collaborative and holistic effort from many at Schaumburg High School and across our district. First, special mention should be given to the hard work that's been happening at the district level to establish positive relationships with Harper College and other community colleges that partner with District two eleven to offer dual-credit courses. These positive relationships have laid the foundation for us to continually work to explore additional dual-credit opportunities for our students. I'd like to take a moment to highlight one such new dual-credit offering at Schaumburg High School last year, intermediate Spanish for heritage speakers. It provides students the opportunity to develop or improve skills in reading, writing, and conventional grammar. Last year, Schaumburg had twenty-seven students enroll in this course and take advantage of this new opportunity. These students, many of whom are heritage learners or students enrolled in District fifty-four's dual-language program, gained exposure to college credit-bearing rigorous coursework. And as an added bonus, this course places an emphasis on preparing students for AP Spanish. I'm proud to say that two-thirds of these students leverage this course as a gateway and are currently enrolled in AP Spanish this year. Our staff has also expanded their knowledge on dual-credit course offerings and the benefits that these courses have for students. This has led to an increase in the number of dual-credit certified teachers that we have and teachers currently pursuing the dual-credit certification. The increased familiarity of dual-credit by our staff has resulted in our teachers and counselors placing an increased emphasis on these options with our students during the course recommendation and scheduling process. Staff members have stated that they feel that parents also have an increased familiarity with dual-credit courses, which has led to that increase in enrollment. The dual-credit offerings at Schaumburg High School are not just meant to serve as a stepping stone for a student in an AP course. As we have collectively increased our knowledge of dual-credit course offerings, we're expanding upon our opportunities for all students. One such student was a duly-identified Schaumburg High School student last year. This student is both an English learner and a student that receives additional support through the Special Education Department. The student's done amazing at Schaumburg High School, but the language barrier presents a challenge for them to complete an AP course and successfully manage and navigate an AP exam. The student became aware of dual-credit opportunities from her teachers and her counselor. Last year, the student took advantage of our dual-credit offerings to get ahead in college credit by enrolling in the Dual-Credit Business Incubator Program at Schaumburg High School. This year, as a junior, they're enrolled in another dual-credit course, the Dual-Credit Accounting Course. This is just one example of the way District two eleven offers extraordinary opportunities for our students. We know that District Goal number two, academic growth, is closely tied to the work our teachers do every day in their classrooms and the work that they do in their PLTs. One of our goals as a leadership team at Schaumburg High School this year is to increase the connectedness that our staff feels between the work they do every day and the goals presented in the District two eleven strategic plan. We kicked off the year with an activity specifically aimed at laying the foundation for this work. We spent time during the first Institute Day at Schaumburg, working in PLTs to take a deep dive into the district academic goal data. This included a reflection activity in which PLTs were able to look at Schaumburg High School's specific data and discuss what they saw within this data. These conversations shifted from numbers to students, where they discussed how they, as a PLT, could have the biggest impact on Schaumburg High School students this year. Each PLT was then able to identify an area of focus to align to the district goals and move forward with their planning in their groups. This area of focus will serve as a guide for their work as a PLT this year. This is in addition to the work they would normally do during their PLT early morning work sessions. We've received early feedback that the activity has proven to be an empowering one for our PLTs, and we are excited to see the type of impact it's going to have on our district academic goal data at Schaumburg High School next year. I would now like to hand it off to Mr. Tony Medina.
Good evening. I will be reviewing District Goal number three, college and career readiness. Just as with our other district goals, the college and career readiness goal is a tiered approach that allows students to meet the goal in multiple ways. To begin with, students are able to meet this goal through the SAT suite of assessments. Every student in District two eleven can meet this goal through meeting the state benchmarks as shown on the slide. Students are able to meet this goal on any of the SAT suite of assessments, including the PSAT eight-nine, PSAT-ten, and the SAT. These are taken in ninth, tenth, and eleventh grades. In addition, students are able to meet this goal through reaching their student-level growth estimates from College Board. With the growth of our English learner population, we have also included data from the access test, a test that is taken by all students who receive EL services, as another tier for students to meet this goal. Similar to the SAT, students can meet this goal by meeting the state standard or by meeting their state-assigned growth goal. The last-tiered areas are college and career readiness indicators in English and math. Students can meet this tier in a variety of ways, such as meeting the Illinois State Board of Education benchmarks on the SAT in both English and math, taking a dual-credit math or English course, taking an AP course in English or math, or meeting college-level standards on the Harper College Placement Exam. This year, eighty-two percent of District two eleven students met goal number three compared to sixty-nine percent in two thousand and twenty-two. All of our schools showed strong growth in students meeting the SAT benchmark or growth goal on the SAT suite of assessments. During the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, Palatine High School grew from fifty-five percent of our students meeting the college and career readiness goal in two thousand and twenty-two to seventy-three percent of our students meeting the goal in two thousand and twenty-three. This increase is due in part to two things. Significant growth in the amount of students meeting the state standard or meeting their growth goal on the SAT suite of assessments, as well as a significant increase in the amount of PHS students meeting the access test state standard or meeting their state-assigned growth target. Palatine High School doubled the amount of students meeting the national standard from two thousand and twenty-two, and the number of students rose five percent in terms of students meeting their growth target. We are extremely proud of our EL students and teachers for this success. The two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year was an exciting year for our EL department. As you know, our EL population has grown to approximately six hundred students at Palatine. Students are coming to us with unique experiences and diverse backgrounds. Some students come to us with highly unstructured educational backgrounds and who have experienced some significant trauma, while some EL students enter Palatine High School with very strong educational backgrounds and are assigned to calculus class after a few weeks. Now, our journey towards meeting this goal began last July when we began having conversations on how to best involve as many stakeholders as possible to support our students. Our focus was one-hundred percent teacher-led and teacher-driven. Our EL department staff led the planning along with our administration, sheltered EL teachers, and our leadership team. The entire EL department worked with our instructional coaches on new best practices for instruction and assessment, and led with the logistical planning for the administration of the actual test to provide our students with the best possible testing environment. Every single EL teacher, teacher assistant, sheltered teacher played a role in the tremendous growth our students showed. Last year, the theme of Palatine High School professional development was collective efficacy. Collective efficacy is the renewed belief that we, as an entire school community, can make an impact on our student achievement. Research shows that collective efficacy in a school can make the biggest impact on student achievement and growth. Our all-school focus and belief in the EL department and our students is a perfect example of the impact that collective efficacy can make. It was a part of every conversation related to professional development last year and continues to be an area of focus this school year. Our student growth on access is not just due to this one department, though. EL programming was an all-school focus. Some of our professional development programming was geared toward reaching all students, but especially our EL students. Teachers from all departments committed to our professional development practices, allowing us to give more teachers a voice in the process. Most interestingly, ten teachers that had never presented before to staff presented to all teachers regarding EL instructional strategies. One teacher in particular, Robert Pahatchek, from our Applied Technology Department, had worked on a curriculum project the previous summer focused on supporting EL students in his classes. He had previously seen EL students struggle in his classes for a variety of reasons. During the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, his professional development work with multiple EL teachers truly changed the experience for EL students in his classes. The students were more engaged, more supported, but most importantly, more successful in his classes. Due to the success he experienced, he, someone who never, ever expected to lead professional development, for the first time presented to all of our staff. These teacher-led moments are the types of impactful developmental experiences that truly drove the success in our goal. Now, this coming school year, we've already started the process to continue our strong growth in this goal. Our EL department is already hard at work in reviewing last year's access progress and this year's student growth goals individually. New to all schools across the country this year is the SAT suite of assessment adjustment from College Board. Not only has the test format changed, the College Board has made the test so that it is administered one-hundred percent electronically. We are giving our first electronic test in all five schools on College Day on September twenty-eighth. Teachers began this work this summer to learn more about the new SAT, adjust their curricular and instructional approaches, as well as to design questions that are similar to the new format. We are excited and hopeful to see the growth of our students moving forward. To discuss District Goal number four, Mike Alther, Principal of Hoffman Estates High School.
Thank you, Tony. Our collective goal is to graduate students with the necessary academic knowledge and academic skill through a range of rigorous experiences both in and out of the classroom, while providing space for social, emotional, and physical well-being growth. District two eleven strategic goal four provides accountability and measurement of a student's path towards our ultimate goal, earning and meeting the necessary requirements for graduation. The state of Illinois strongly recognizes the significance of a student's on-track-to-graduation status as freshman-on-track is a school report card indicator. Through District two eleven strategic goal four, you can see as a district, ninety percent of all students were on-track to graduation in two thousand and twenty-three, which is up just over one and a half percent from the previous school year. When digging deeper into the twenty-three numbers, we see ninety-five percent of freshman students and ninety-four percent of senior students on-track. However, we did see a slight decrease in both sophomore and junior on-track numbers. I will address this slight decrease through a deeper look at Hoffman Estates High School on-track-to-graduation data. To bring focus on Hoffman Estates High School's performance within District Goal four, you can see that ninety-five percent of our two thousand and twenty-three freshman hawks were on-track to graduation. This is a six percent increase from two thousand and twenty-two. When looking more closely at our demographic subgroups, you see a twelve percent increase in on-track status from two thousand and twenty-two in our freshman Black student population, a ten percent increase in our freshman Hispanic student population, a nine percent increase in our freshman low-income population, a seventeen percent increase in our freshman EL population, and an eight percent increase for our freshman with an IEP. We saw no change in our freshman white population and a small increase of two percent for our freshman Asian students. Our senior students showed growth over year when compared to the two thousand and twenty-two school year, as well with growth occurring across all demographics except one, low-income. Seniors still represented a ninety-six percent overall senior on-track status. During the two thousand and twenty-two school year, an analysis of our freshman on-track data was completed. We determined what courses our freshman students struggled with, and we found that Algebra I was the largest barrier to students maintaining their on-track status. Using this data, we engaged in inclusive collaboration among stakeholders, which included Algebra I teachers, administration, students, and parents. A plan was developed to support students through a team approach, which included a pull-out program for freshman students struggling with algebra from their academic intervention or their study hall. Here, students received additional one-to-one focused instruction and support from one of our math teacher assistants. Another component to the freshman on-track support plan included practice test sessions. Mr. Gannis, the administrator working with the Algebra I teachers and students, interviewed students and found that many said they just blanked out during the test. As a result, a similar but low-pressure practice test setting was created. Our goal was to build confidence with the student, which could be carried forward to the actual test. These sessions were conducted after school, and it included consultation with parents. Students were so happy about their improvement after attending the practice test study sessions with their Algebra I teachers. One student went to Mr. Gannis beaming with pride after earning an A on her unit test. Even more fulfilling was her mother's joy when we called to tell her how her student earned that A. At the start of a student's senior year, one of the biggest motivators is graduation. It's in sight, it's near, it's real. And through our Student Services Department, and specifically our Student School Counselor, each senior has a meeting at the start of their senior year. This meeting may include the parent when arranged. In this meeting, a student's work towards graduation is reviewed through a transcript evaluation, which includes courses taken, fast- completion, SAT compliance, driver's education compliance, and passing the Constitution exam, to name a few. In addition, an assessment of a student's post-secondary plan occurs, which includes resource identification and support of the student's post-secondary plan. This focus, attention, and review drives the student's path to graduation in their senior year. Now, success is not a linear path. Sometimes, a path to success has many twists and turns, as is the case with our sophomore and junior on-track status being lower than our freshman and senior on-track numbers both in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. The key is that, at the end of four years, students are on-track. They do graduate. And for this school year, we took a deeper look at our twenty-three sophomore on-track data to determine that geometry was the course where sophomore students struggled most. We took that data and replicated our freshman on-track plan and now apply it to our sophomores. This includes early connection and collaboration with our sophomores, who may or may not have experienced the freshman on-track Algebra I supports described earlier. Sophomore student reaction to our early check-ins have been positive, and our geometry teachers are working closely during dedicated PLT time to develop similar support systems and opportunities for practice tests. At Hoffman Estates High School, we are excited by the success we have had with our freshman on-track plan and look forward to similar success with our sophomores this school year. Now, I would like to introduce Mr. Langer, who will speak about our next district goal.
Thank you, Mr. Alther. District two eleven's academic goal with regards to wellness is that all District two eleven students will demonstrate growth in their physical, mental, and social wellness. In essence, we aim to foster well-rounded individuals who are equipped to thrive in all aspects of life. Therefore, District two eleven has in turn identified the following measurements to determine success in supporting the whole student's growth. One, achieve a healthy fitness zone on Fitness Gram or demonstrate growth from pre-to-post assessment. Two, maintain a fifty percent or higher percentage of favorable responses to the Sense of Belonging measurement on the Panorama Student Survey. And three, identify a trusted adult every year. Students must meet the Fitness Gram measurement and either the Sense of Belonging measurement or identify a trusted adult. Last school year, seventy percent of all District two eleven students met the wellness goal, an increase of twelve percent over the previous school year. At Framed High School, we wholeheartedly embrace this commitment. Our aim is to ensure that every student receives a holistic education, creating an environment where wellness thrives. And so, last school year, eighty-one percent of all Vikings met the District two eleven wellness goal, an increase of twelve percent over the previous year. Let's now take a look at some of the individual components of this goal. To meet the District two eleven metric for Fitness Gram, students must achieve a healthy fitness zone or demonstrate growth from pre-to-post assessment in all four of the following assessments: pacer, sit-ups, push-ups, and sit-and-reach. Last school year, eighty-one point three percent of Framed students met this metric, up over twelve percent from the previous year. This can be attributed in part to the significant increase in consistent and regular fitness components integrated into each wellness course. The largest increase came from our underrepresented students, rising almost twenty percent over the previous year. In speaking with our department chair, Andrew Kitterell, he found that one of the contributing factors to this was a nod to a previous goal mentioned, regular attendance. Students were also more engaged, thanks in part to the wide variety of course offerings, activities in each of these courses, and relationships that were built between students and their teachers, many of whom were listed as trusted adults, a term I will talk more about a little later on. The next metric for District five is Sense of Belonging. Creating an environment where all students feel like they are included and matter is important for several reasons, such as social skills development, emotional well-being, and academic success. The developed definition for Sense of Belonging in District two eleven schools is the feeling that students are safe, valued, and involved within their school community. To quantify this, District two eleven utilizes the Panorama Student Survey and asks students questions about their social, emotional learning, school climate, and school satisfaction. Last year, we saw a rise of five point eight percent of students who responded that they feel like they completely belong or belong quite a bit at Framed High School, or showed improvement between the fall and spring administration of the survey. This was aided by the professional development that took place last year for staff. It focused on increasing and enhancing strategies for belonging and social, emotional learning, and into the instructional practices that teachers utilize on a daily basis. High academic rigor and SEL practices do not have to be and should not be mutually exclusive. In fact, our staff embraced the idea that social, emotional learning strategies enhance student access to and engagement with academic concepts. We are dedicated to ensuring this upward trend continues by constantly exploring new strategies and approaches to enhance the sense of belonging further. One way we plan to accomplish this is through community-building activities, the first of which took place the first few days of this school year. If you were to walk into Framed, you would see a visual representation of how the individual staff and students are connected to actively being mighty, brave, and bold. Green, yellow, and white links with personal commitments connect overhead throughout the first floor that remind us daily that we are one learning community. The final metric for District Goal five is for students to identify a trusted adult each year. A trusted adult in District two eleven is a supportive adult in the building that is approachable, creates safe spaces, listens to students, provides support, connects students to resources, and acts with the student's best interest in mind. Framed had nearly one hundred percent of our students identify a trusted adult, and it wasn't just teachers and counselors. wasn't just teachers and counselors. Over two hundred and sixty different staff members were chosen, including TAs, coaches, support staff members, student supervisors, and others. These numbers are a testament to the effectiveness of our strategies and the dedication of our entire school community. However, we know that it's how we use this information that ultimately matters. Trusted adults support students in a wide range of experiences. Sometimes, trusted adults intervene to assist students with conflict. One such example from last year involved Jenny, who's trusted adult, one of our student supervisors, was able to assist in preventing a physical altercation by working with her and connecting her with her support team to find alternate methods to resolve any conflict. The involvement of this student supervisor in a trusted adult role was meaningful for Jenny, who was able to see how much the school community cared about her well-being. Additionally, trusted adults play important roles in providing college recommendations, connecting students with clubs and sports, and helping students navigate the many systems of a modern-day high school. We will ensure that every student continues to identify a trusted adult and provide support to our staff in all job categories through professional development as they fulfill this important role. The district's commitment to wellness for all students is unwavering. We are not only nurturing academic excellence, but also fostering the holistic development of our students, and together, we will continue to provide an environment where the whole student thrives in all aspects of their lives. I would now like to pass it back to Mr. Schumaker.
District Goal Number Six seeks to provide measurable ways through which we can increase equity in our schools and across the district. Similar to previous goals, this goal includes four different ways that measure equity. The first is to assess our percentage of diverse staff members. The second is to monitor the percentage of students taking non-developmental coursework. The third is to reduce the rate of racially disproportionate referrals and suspensions. And finally, we seek to continue to improve the number of underrepresented students who meet District Goals Number One through Four. Performance on this goal is calculated differently, with individual calculations necessary for each component. One of the things that we utilize to determine the progress on this goal is the overall number of District 211 students meeting Goals One through Four. This data is shown on the slide projected. Overall, seventy percent of all District 211 students met all Goals One through Four, demonstrating a twelve percent increase over last year. From an equity lens, we compare that number with the number of traditionally underrepresented students in our schools who meet the performance levels for Goals One through Four. The performance trend for this measurement is represented on the slide in front of you. As you can see, we've increased this percentage as well, growing from thirty-six percent during the twenty-one-twenty-two school year to fifty-two point six percent in the last school year. This represents an increase of sixteen point three percent year-over-year, eclipsing our yearly goal of forty-five point five percent. This number is especially important, as it represents the focused work at our schools to acknowledge, identify, and support students from every culture and every background. Another critical component of this goal is to increase the diversity of our staff members. As we know, our communities are incredibly diverse, and our students desire to see themselves and their cultures represented in our staff. The graph on this slide shows you the consistent increase in diversity, particularly in our teachers, student services, and district leaders over the course of the last several years. Our target for this goal was seventeen point seven four percent of all staff members, and our performance was twenty-one point nine percent. Our district goals are the product of years of careful analysis, feedback, and a clear understanding of what student success looks like during and after high school. As you heard tonight, our performance data on each goal, when compared to both the yearly benchmarks and our previous year's performance, show positive results. These results, which are on your report as numbers, represent both the amazing staff members that build and foster student relationships, as well as the students that attend, engage, and consistently improve their performance. As we started this presentation with, we are honored to have five of those staff members with us this evening to share the successes and the stories from each of our large high schools. The principals before you represent the driving force behind the programs and the efforts that they have shared with you this evening, but they also represent the strategic planning and the countless interactions they have with students, parents, and staff members of our community. We are incredibly grateful for their diligent work and passion for our students, schools, and community. As a district-wide team, we continue to analyze the data in order to develop and refine our current practices and programs to more effectively meet the needs of our students. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you very much for the excellent presentation. I'll start with questions, and I'd like to start with Ms. Cavill, who's on the speakerphone. Ms. Cavill, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I did have just one. It's unusual for me, I know. But this is related to Goal Number Five, the Wellness Goal, and my question is actually coming from the data in the associated reports rather than the slide presentations, which is very much appreciated, by the way. So, you know, when you look at the, all the bits and pieces of, you know, the numbers that make up that overall wellness metric, I found it to be very interesting where the biggest gains were and where we lost points. And, you know, looking at this data here, it seems the area within wellness, which was most challenging for us, was with peer relationships. And so, in the report, it just was just kind of a peer relationship delineated by district and then, of course, by individual schools, which I appreciate. But I was hoping, I have like a two-part question. I was hoping for some insight into more specificity around what that peer relationship metric might mean, so I could better understand it. And then, the second part of that question is a curiosity about whether or not the administrators present here today believe that, you know, these wellness metrics we're seeing, you know, the peer relationships metric specifically, may or may not be related to, you know, the attendance metric that we're previously referred to in the beginning of this.
Sure. Certainly, thank you for reading the report, and certainly that one stuck out to us as well. We have a very high standard for what we want from peer relationships from our students, as you can see from the ninety score that we want. We have already analyzed that and dug into what exactly the Five Essentials survey is asking those students, and that particular section of it is called the supplementary measure. So, it's just a small part of the survey, and it's actually only four questions out of the entire survey that go into those scores. And so, we've looked at the scores over the past five years, analyzed and identified where those changes are, and many of those changes come from the students answering the question as a little or some, as far as the choices go. So, overall, what I would say is, do we think that our student-peer relationships are that much lower than the numbers tell you? We do not think that, but we do think that it's tied to things like sense of belonging. So, as you said, potentially, it is tied to attendance and what are seen with them. And it's one of the things that we're asking our student wellness teams to dive into, and one of the things that we're looking at particularly is, what is a student's mindset, or what does the student think when they see those questions and when they answer those questions? Because what our, for lack of a better term, what our hypothesis is, is as adults, we see and think one thing when we see these questions, and when we talk about peer relationships, and our students are seeing and thinking a different thing. And so, we're really digging into the concept of student voice and what they think and what they see when they answer those questions, and what they see and think about peer relationships.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just, one note before I leave off any questions for other board members present. Aside from appreciating the presentation, you know, we've got a lot of really strong, positive data trends, and so, I know that there's a lot of work, you know, that those numbers and that growth represent. So, I very much appreciate that work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any questions on this side here? Ms. Barron? Mr. Rosenblum?
First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I know it takes a lot to get this information and to gather it all together and present it to us in a very informative and somewhat easy-to-understand format. With the COVID challenges that we faced over the last few years, this information is very, very positive. We're working our way back, right? There were a lot of things that negatively impacted us as a school district, and school districts across the country, but it's very positive to see these things and to see that we have staff and students working together to make things successful, and I really think we're on a very positive path. And due to your leadership, working with many of your teammates and staff members, we're doing very, very good things, I think, for our students and our community, and I want to thank you. I wrote it down here three times. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do and the concentration and efforts that you put into continuing to make our school district as great as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barron?
Yeah. I have no questions besides, thank you so much for being here tonight with us and providing such a nice presentation and really making it easy to digest some of that report that we received, so thank you so much. One of the things that I have heard in all your stories, in all your successes, is that connections that you have built with students, and I think that's something that, I won't get ahead of myself, but the Wellness Committee also discussed that yesterday during our meeting, is just building those connections with students and how do we, and we can measure that success and see how they, you know, perform more, you know, well in school and how we've seen those increases. So, that's one of the things that I kept writing as well, like connections, connections. You know, thank you so much for sharing those success stories as well, and also talking about those challenges and barriers that you all have faced in your schools and how you have overcome those challenges and barriers in very unique ways. I really enjoyed hearing all of those. One of the things that I have heard as well is the sense of belonging, and that, again, is one of, again, I won't get ahead of myself, but that is one of the goals that each of the schools have identified during our Wellness Committee, that they want to focus on that sense of belonging, and what does that look like in their schools? So, again, thank you so much for providing such a really nice presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes, thank you. Miss Colquitts, thank you. I have a few questions. First, the college and career readiness is based off of the SAT suite, and it's mentioned in the report about the college remedial courses. Is that considered in the data? Do we take the remedial course data that we get from, let's say, Harper College and incorporate this into any of these results in any way?
You mean the remedial courses that they may take at Harper?
Correct.
Is that in our, on our data on an annual basis?
Is that incorporated? Is there a factor or something that would validate or create additional data points?
So, what's in the report and what's in the goals is the work that our schools are doing to, so that students don't have to take the remedial coursework, and so, that's what's represented in here.
Okay, so...
We do have analysis and conversations with Harper about our students who are taking coursework in our high schools versus the student who may be taking the same course at Harper College, and their success rates after that, and we do track that, and we track that through our NEXUS organization, which is 214, 211, Barrington, and Harper College.
Okay, yeah, I'm just referring to it because I know it's a state law that was incorporated, that that data has to be returned, and I'm just wondering if we were doing anything with it as far as goal-setting.
We have, the state law certainly does allow the opportunity for all districts across the state to partner with their community college, as referenced, and I think Mr. Harland said it. We have a great relationship with Harper College and have always been able to share data and visions and goals for our students along the way, so I truly appreciate that connection with Harper College. I know not every district has that potential ability.
I'll reiterate the question. Do we do anything with that data?
Yes, if it's tracking the wrong way, we absolutely do.
Okay, but it doesn't influence the goals in this type of manner?
That specific data is coming back onto school report card and other accountability measures this year. These goals were made two years ago, when that wasn't necessarily a focus of the accountability measures, so we have not changed the goals, because the goals were approved on a five-year cycle. So, while we use it outside of these goals, for these goals, it's not considered.
Okay, so it's just the SAT suite with college and career readiness, and that's completely, okay, thank you. Can we get the data on that performance goal, independent of the averages for, like, ABC? I know we get them summarized, but is there a way to, I guess, pull out with the subgroups to see if it's across? I know it's average, but if there's, we look at EL in some metrics, but then, we don't look at it in other metrics, and it seems like to compare apples to apples, we should kind of be looking at the performance of the subgroups in the report on each metric, if we're going to be tracking them in specific metrics?
So, I believe there's a, I believe there is a graph, and it's a bar graph, that does contain subgroup comparisons both to each other and to last year for the each...
So, that's holistic for the district, but not for each school, so it's hard to tell if...
I mean, I could put five more graphs per goal on this if you wanted, but I felt like we had a lot of data as it was, so...
Thanks, no, I appreciate it. It's a big report, but to tie it together, it kind of helps, so I appreciate that.
If there are any particular ones, you can certainly let me know, and we will get you that information.
Thank you. I did notice that we have attendance results at sixty-one percent, but we have an eighty-eight percent performance measurement. Is, so the attendance doesn't drive the overall goal, and so, there's other components that are additive to that?
Correct. So, the way the goals are set up is for, specifically for Goals One through Three, they're set up for a diverse community. So, students have four different ways they can meet the metric. So, if you're talking about Goal Number One, involvement, students can meet the goal and demonstrate performance by meeting the attendance thresholds, or they can also do it by being involved in an athletic or activity, or there are some students that we realize in our community that can't participate in an after-school sport or activity, because they have to go home and watch a sibling, they have to have a job because of their family situation. And so, when we developed these goals, we said, we don't want those students to be excluded, and so, included in that is a service goal, and so, if students show service in their community, they can meet that goal. And also, there's an employment goal. If students are employed in the community and maintain that employment throughout the school year, they can meet it. So, they can meet any one of those four to demonstrate involvement in the school community.
So, if they're, if they're meeting the working goal, then that would count for missing the attendance goal?
Correct, because they're still, we believe that they're still showing involvement in the school community by maintaining employment within that school community.
If they're employed outside the school community, it still meets the goal?
Depending on if they report it to us, because they, this is, the reporting mechanism is through the student having the conversation with their counselor or trusted adult, so potentially.
Okay, I think that the goal is to keep students in school and attending, and it seems like that dilutes that focus, in my opinion, but I understand. The accelerated classes, I noticed that there wasn't really any movement on that. Is that just due to adequate staff, low enrollment? What are we looking at there as far as the accelerated classwork goes?
Sure. I think it's a myriad of factors, and it's, with some of these, it's tough to pin down exactly the, this is the factor that really switches that one. I think, overall, what we've gained from an analysis and conversations within that goal is, in our post-COVID educational world, families are doing a deeper dive into student options and the balance that they want from their students between potentially life and academics, and they're making more direct choices consistent to what they want in their family. And so, we've had that conversation with lots of families, and I know our counselors do. We still want students to take accelerated coursework, but we also want to work very collaborative, very collaboratively with their families to develop and refine their post-high-school goals and make sure they're taking the appropriate coursework for those goals.
So, just to be clear, the percentage is performance-based, not necessarily volume-based, correct? So, regardless of the volume of students in the accelerated courses, this is just the performance of that. So, even if the pool is static and doesn't grow, or families don't consider to take those accelerated courses, the students that do choose to take that are seeing stagnant performances. That's the way I read the graph, but if it's a volumetric percentage, please let me know.
I would say it's neither one. I don't think it's stagnant. The goal is enroll in an, if you're speaking specifically about the accelerated measurement, the goal is that the students will enroll in an accelerated course and earn a grade of C or better.
Just overall in the report, just so I'm aware, all of the... Just overall in the report, just so I'm aware, all of the measurements were identical in '21, '22 to '22, '23. So, let's say a wellness assessment's issued at the same time, under the same parameters, with the same measurements?
Correct. The only change that was noted in the analysis at the end of the report, specifically in district goal three, was that this is the first year that we've had growth data for aggregate from all classes. And so, if you recall from last year's report, we didn't, because of the pandemic and the way that the College Board structured their SAT suite, we had a class of students that did not have the ability to earn the growth goal because they did not both take a PSAT eight-nine and a PSAT ten. So, with that goal, this year represents the first year we've had all students had the ability to have the growth.
Okay, thank you. Looking at the, at performance metric, I notice we're tracking freshman to freshman, sophomore to sophomore. But if I look at it from like graduating class, it seems like the class of 2025 had a performance drop of 8%. The class of 2024, a 1% drop.
Which school are you looking at specifically?
This is the district goal four, for the performance indicators, for on-track. So, although it might appear like it's been a percent change from the, from the classes, we get freshmen that come in and perform very well, at like 94% are on-track to graduate. And then, from their freshman to their sophomore year, they've 8% district-wide.
Correct.
Okay, so, when we look at that, have we identified anything that happens between, I know we spoke about algebra and geometry and that might be isolated at that class level, but I would think that that performance across the district, have we identified anything between the freshman year experience and the sophomore year experience? Is it just an increase in rigor? Is it just an apathy?
Well, I think we both had students go from freshman to sophomore year. There's about 1,000 things that change in that year. And so, I think what our schools are doing and what the goals were set up for was, most of the schools focused on freshman on-track last year, which was the first year, right? Research says that's one of the most important years. They now have a system in place for freshmen on-track that they developed and implemented last year. So, that system will continue to run this year and now the focus shifts to sophomore on-track to try to figure that out. And specifically, within all of those factors, what are the most impactful ones that we can do? And so, that's, to Mr. Arthur's point, what he spoke about was some specific math-related ones, but all schools are looking at all of those. Are there English factors? Are there community factors? Are there simply maturation factors that occur in that year that change things? And so, there's a lot of them. I wish I could tell you, this is the one, but I think what our schools are doing this year will set up that system so that you will see different results and then they'll move on to junior year because the freshman and sophomore systems will be in place.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't look like junior year needs a lot of attention, but based on the data, so... Then, can, for goal number two, when we look at A for our benchmarks versus growth rate, can you just elaborate on the difference between the two?
Can you ask that in a different way?
Sure. Item A says, "Meet SAT suite grade-specific benchmarks or growth targets."
Excellent, yes, thank you, that's helpful. So, this is, so, what this says is, the College Board has benchmarks for every one of the exams on the SAT suite, and those benchmarks are associated with the concept that if a student meets those benchmarks, then they have a 75% chance of earning a C or better in an entry-level college course. So, that's how those are set. We obviously want our students to meet those benchmarks, they're important, and we use the College Board benchmarks in ours because that's what our students see, that's what our parents see, that's what their reports say. The College Board several years ago also put out a report on what is the estimated growth from both suite or test to test. And so, an example would be PSAT eight-nine freshman year to PSAT ten sophomore year. They also put out data on what's the difference between an eighth grader that takes the PSAT eight-nine, much like our incoming freshmen do, and then a freshman at the end of their freshman year, you know, several months later that takes it. And so, we've taken those, the College Board's statistical data on what a student should grow from year to year, and that's an alternate way that a student could meet the goal, is maybe they can't meet the benchmark, or they didn't meet the benchmark, but they did show the expected growth, and so, they meet it as well.
Okay, that kind of leads into my next question. So, when I look at our report here with relationship to the number of students that are meeting the critical learning standards versus the GPA targets versus the SAT or growth rate, it looks like half of our students meet critical learning targets, yet we have over 80% meeting the SAT growth and GPAs exceeding, you know, 70%. So, I feel like there might be a disconnect there if half of our students can't hit critical learning standards, but yet we're looking at 70, 80% meeting these other goals.
Sure, there is a disconnect there and Mr. Harland alluded to it in his section, but I'll be more direct about it. During COVID and immediately post-COVID, the state of Illinois asked us to prioritize our learning standards because of all the other factors that were going on at the time. So, we took our traditional CLSs that existed pre-COVID, we prioritized them, and so, there was a little bit of difference there, right? We came out of COVID and last year, last school year represented really the first school year that wasn't fully disrupted, right? I'm not saying there wasn't a disruption, but it wasn't fully disrupted. So, what our teachers, what we asked our teachers to do in their PLTs, in their departments, and the principals led some of this as well, is reassess the critical learning standards, go from prioritized back to traditional, but with the concept of what we learned during COVID and what has changed in the world since before then, to take an analysis of those critical learning standards and say, are those still reliable? Are they still rigorous? And are they still relevant? And so, what you saw in last year's curriculum reports from every round, what you'll see in this year's curriculum reports from every round is a lot of modifications and revisions to the critical learning standards because of what we know. And so, during this school year, as we did that process and changed the critical learning standards, we also changed the assessments that went along with them. So, there was not as close as alignment as the, we had before, and it caused a lower performance. And certainly that, we, we know that and we, that is, what I've told people is one of my main areas of focus, is to make sure that the CLS proficiency this year demonstrates what it, what it should demonstrate, which is the student learning consistent with GPA, consistent with other academic growth.
So, back to the prior question, the CSL, Critical Learning Standards, are changing throughout the five-year plan? They're being measured differently year after year?
Yes.
Okay. I have nothing else, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Madam President, if I can just say just one thing before Mr. McGowan gets in there, I just want to make a comment on the involvement. So, I wasn't here when the board approved the goals, but I think for the involvement one, you did a really good job, the board approved, at really taking a look at the student and really taking a look at their involvement. And it doesn't have to be always in the school, it's awesome that you take into account the community as well, because like Mr. Schumacher said, the student can have, you know, things going on at home, they might need to have a job, they might need to be taking care of the, you know, younger siblings. So, really taking a look at the involvement, how the student is involved, not only in school, but in the community. And I think the goal is to get them involved in something and not out in the streets doing, you know, whatever that might be. So, I don't think that it dilutes the goal, I think it really ensures that we really take a look at all our students and their different situations that they have, you know, at home.
Thank you for adding that. Mr. McGowan? Excuse me?
I think, I guess more of a comment. These committees are effective. Our Student Wellness Committee, our Equity Committee, being a part of both, seeing the work we've put in for the last two years, I think there's, there's definitely a correlation between the work we put in in those committees and these numbers I see here. Overall, I'm happy and thank you for the presentation. Mr. Medina specifically, as far as college and career readiness, it looks like you took the biggest jump. And personally, I'd like to know, is there any one thing you can contribute to that? Or, because you do have a huge second English learning population at Bauton High School, I'm just curious, was it, is it the equity work? Is it the involvement?
I think all of the above. I think all, we, we struggled for a couple of years and it was a very difficult 21, 2021 was, it was very difficult. And I felt like last year was a, you know, we needed to target what we wanted to do with our students, what was the main goal. And honestly, I felt like we needed to embrace more who we are as a school and with 600 EL students, you know, the theme, and this was asked many times last year, was, you know, we're focusing a lot on our EL students, but I think the theme of our presentations, our professional development was, what's good for an EL student is also good for a mainstream student. And I think that became the theme and people bought into that, and I think that impacted on multiple levels. I think I'm most proud of our work with our EL population, the growth that we had on NEXUS was really unbelievable. But I think also getting students back within our four walls of our classrooms is second to none, you know, in District Two, and I'm very confident all those schools feel the same way. But I think that having our kids right in front of us is, is what made the biggest difference. I am really excited for this coming school year because this is our first group that didn't, that we're going to have for, for three years, is juniors, right? These juniors, the senior class was at home, we didn't see them, you know, and that was noticeable in their behavior and the way they responded and in their academic achievement. So, I'm excited for how we grow this year. I think this will be a really great year in terms of that. Thank you.
Excellent.
I, I would like to add on to what Ms. Barron had said about involvement. I've really been a proponent of having our students involved, getting their voices heard. And these last couple of years, we've been able to achieve that, and I really think that that's important. And I commend all of our schools for including the students and getting them to work on issues that, that involve their school, whether it's on the wellness or equity, any of those things that are, that are going on that benefit them and their peers. So, thank you for, for doing that, and I think that that does make a difference also. So...
And I just want to make one more comment. As you all know, I spend a lot of time visiting our schools throughout the year for a variety of reasons. And I just want to mention how much I observe and see and appreciate the direct involvement, the direct involvement that our senior staff in our schools, our principals and assistant principals and deans have with our students. The relationships that our principals have with our students, the interactions that I see firsthand between our students and our principals and them coming, running up to you with good news or to tell you something and to have that, that ability to have a one. When I was in high school, I don't even ask you who my principal was, okay? Because I didn't have that relationship, I didn't need that relationship, and that really wasn't going on very much when I was in high school, at least not in my high school. But I see it every day when I'm in our schools, that you all are very involved and very interactive with just about every student that I, that I see near you. And, and I know, I appreciate that, and I think it really, truly benefits the students. And we could see that in this information, but we could see it in our students. And so, thank you so much for, for taking your time in having that interpersonal relationship with those in our schools.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much and...
Go home and say hi to your families.
Yes, have a good evening. All right, then that takes us to the consent agenda items. We will be having three motions. Is there any other item, is there any item that a board member wishes to have pulled? I know that I'm going to be pulling Subject F, the resolutions. Is there anything else that someone would like to have pulled? All right, so, there will be three separate motions. The first is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17, 2023, and the removal of Item F, Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, those will be removed and the remaining items would be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes us to the second recommended action, which is that the minutes of the regular meeting, August 17, 2023, be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to our next recommended action, and that is that the Board of Education approve the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax years 2019 and 2022. And further authorize Franzic as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene, intervene in appeal proceeding forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the properties for which the district received notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, discussion?
Second.
I apologize, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, thank you. Okay, then that takes us to special reports and communication.
Madam President, can we just take a quick break?
Okay, well, if everyone's in agreement, we'll have a five-minute break or a few minutes. Thank you.
I've never I haven't run across anybody that looks not soldiers. They do everybody else like that.
All right. All right, we'll be back in session then. Freedom of Information Act requests, that's an information item unless someone has any questions. All right, next is the school safety update. Again, that's an information item. There's been some material in here. Dr. Small.
The safety of District two eleven students and staff is his top priority. The District two eleven administration and local police departments have open and effective communication regarding assessments of our school safety protocols, audits, updated safety technologies, and any new recommendations regarding school safety from the Secret Service, FBI, and the Department of Homeland Security. District administration in partnership with the police departments will continue the evaluation of facility scanning systems and their effectiveness to stop weapons from coming on campus. This will be a follow up to the July twenty twenty two evaluation of the facility scanning systems. Also being evaluated are any potential gaps in the use of one school resource officer in a school and any new recommendations based on the most recent safety reports from the Secret Service, FBI, or the Department of Homeland Security. The assessment of these three items is currently happening and reports will be brought back to the board in October and possibly November if needed. The use of social media or even phone calls for hoaxes is unfortunately occurring throughout the country. The three local police departments recently met together with District two eleven to discuss the evaluation of these types of threats. In District two eleven, the assessments of threats to an individual or a group always includes the involvement of the police. Our continued open communications and partnerships with the police departments is vital when evaluating any threat, and we are thankful for the relationship we have with them.
Okay. Dr. Small's provided an update for us and some of the things that we've been doing. And I think especially interesting and and good to point out is that in July we implemented our school safety and security personnel for each of the schools. So that adds more professional staff with law enforcement background into the schools to be aware of things that are going on. Any questions or comments or anything? Okay, if there are none, then the next item is the report on new professional staff. And again, that's an informational item. Dr. Small.
We're excited to welcome sixty two new full time and part time professional staff members, which includes teachers, psychologists, social workers, speech and language pathologists, and counselors to our district this year.
Any questions or anything on that one? All right, then that'll take us to the six day sixth day enrollment. Dr. Small?
As of our sixth day audit, we have twelve thousand one hundred and sixty students enrolled in our district. This is one of our higher enrollments over the past few years, yet about one hundred students less than last year.
Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Next is our class size committee report. Dr. Small?
There are almost three thousand five hundred sections of courses that are scheduled each year in our five schools. The number of students assigned to each section are reviewed. This year, there were six sections of the almost thirty five hundred sections that were over the guidelines at the start of the school year, and only two remained outside of the guidelines of the sixth day audit. My sincere appreciation to our student services directors at each school who lead the complex development of our master schedule.
Okay, any questions there? All right, thank you. That'll take us to the salary compensation report, and that's an information item. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add. Dr. Small?
Illinois School Code requires the annual reporting to the ISBE and posting of administrator and teacher salaries. The report on the agenda will be submitted to the ISBE and posted on the District two website two eleven website as required.
Okay, thank you. Next is the twenty twenty three summer school enrollment report. Again, informational item. Dr. Small?
This has our enrollment and a cost analysis of running our two semesters of summer school. The expenditures that are used to create this report include the salaries for all personnel hired specifically for summer school, any supplies that are associated with the courses.
Okay. Any questions? All right, then that takes us to the District two eleven Forward Together Strategic Plan, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three progress report. Again, an informational item and a good piece of material here. Dr. Small?
On June sixteenth, twenty twenty two, the Board of Education adopted the District two eleven Strategic Plan Forward Together, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. The strategic plan builds on the board adopted academic goals, equity plan, and identifies ten key priorities that are aligned with subsequent goals, indicators, strategies, and targets. These are all listed on additional handouts on the agenda today. Throughout the year, the board has received detailed reports on those areas. And this progress report on the agenda is a summary of the work towards the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three targets. And the board will continue to receive detailed reports throughout the upcoming year.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, that takes us to teacher evaluation update. Dr. Small?
In August, twenty twenty three, the law was signed that amended the school code provisions regarding tenure acquisition and the deadline to provide notice to teachers regarding nonrenewal and reduction in force. For teachers first employed on our district on or after July first, twenty twenty three, the timeline to earn tenure has moved from four years to three years, provided they receive ratings of proficient or excellent. The amendment also changes the deadline for notification of none of the, excuse me, the notification of tenures of nonrenewal or RIF from forty five days of the end of the school year to a standard date of April fifteenth each year. These legislative changes have required us to change our four year nontenure evaluation system to a three year nontenure evaluation system.
Any questions in this? All right, thank you. That'll take us to the Board of Education protocols. And again, that's an information item because we voted on this at the last month. And this is just the clean copy of the board protocols. Any questions on that? All right, then that takes us to the property tax appeal and refund information. And that is an information item. Dr. Small?
The district has a longstanding practice of intervening in tax appeal cases where property owners are seeking assessment reductions before the Property Tax Appeal Board in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Interventions in these cases provide the district with the opportunity to present evidence in the case with the intent to provide a fair tax evaluation process in order to preserve the tax revenue previously levied by the board. Refunds of property taxes awarded reduce the amount of taxes collected by the district. On average, we lose about six million dollars per year due to all the categories of property tax refunds. Through intervention, the district has historically been able to preserve about half of the revenue that would have been lost had the taxpayer been successful in their initial request. Absent our intervention, the amount of refunds paid from tax collections would be greater. The district does have means of collecting tax refunds awarded by the Property Tax Appeal Board. The means by which this can happen is through a supplementary tax levy. This levy is in addition to the annual levy provided by the board, which is then dispersed and paid among all two eleven taxpayers regardless of their town. Should the school choose to collect the supplemental levy, there is still the benefit to intervening in the cases to minimize the amount of the supplemental levy paid by our taxpayers. The board has taken great measures to levy less than the minimum amount allowed over the past several years. The district has abated both its debt levy service and operating levy, levied less than the allowable cap, and not levied for the supplemental levy, all in efforts to act as responsible taxing agency. Our intervention in the property tax appeal processes allows us to prevent evidence, to maintain a fair assessment process, and to help preserve revenue for the school district that has been previously levied without pushing unnecessary tax burden onto the remaining taxpayers. It is recommended that the district continues to engage in these intervention efforts for appeals in excess of a hundred thousand dollars as we have done in the past twenty five years.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. That that information's available for people to take a look at. All right, then that takes us to unfinished business. And the unfinished business is the recommend recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented to establish the fiscal year of the school district to begin July one, twenty twenty three, and end June thirty, twenty twenty four, and that the budget as presented for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four be adopted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The motion carries. All right, that will take us to new business. And the first item there is tax levy introduction. And it's an information item. Dr. Small?
Property taxes will compromise approximately eighty one percent of the district's revenue. As the largest source of revenue for the district, understanding and improving the levy process is critical for the financial stability of our district to provide sustained quality instructional programming for our students while providing a means for achieving the district's strategic priorities without issuance of debt. The tax levy will serve as the primary funding source to sustain our programs for our students, support our operations, and complete necessary capital improvements across the district. This introductory report also includes two components of the twenty twenty three levy that will be discussed in greater detail next month. So I draw your attention to the property tax refund recapture levy law, which is detailed in this report, as well as the look back recapture levy law that is in place. Again, this is information for this meeting, and we'll have more details at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions? All right, then that takes us Traveris Pharmacy Benefit Solution. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designate to engage Traveris to provide pharmacy benefit solutions, including an auction for prescription benefit management services at a rate of zero dollars through December thirty one, twenty twenty four, and one hundred and forty six thousand, six hundred, sixty six dollars and sixty seven cents for each of the remaining three years of the agreement for services provided, assuming that savings greater than the fees are identified. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
If I may.
Dr. Small?
The district is continuously seeking means by which health care benefit costs can be reduced. Though the district has taken a variety of steps to reduce our health care costs, health care claim trends continue to outpace the rate of inflation. It is recommended that the district engage Traveris to procure pharmacy benefit management services for the district. Through assessment of the the district's current contracts and prescription utilization, they offer multiple labors of service for ongoing support and targeted cost reduction for prescription drug claims. Through an auction process, the district will have the opportunity to seek proposals from a greater number of pharmacy benefit manager providers, which in turn drives greater and dynamic competition for us.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Dombrowski?
Just one. This all happens behind the scenes and there'll be no impact to staff benefits?
The evaluation of the current drug claims compared to our PBM contract is behind the scenes. There is no impact to that. So what they're doing is they're taking the costs that should be charged for a prescription and they're comparing that to the contract to make sure because there's changes that happen throughout the year to make sure that they continue to match. And they're readjudicating all of that to make sure that we are paying what we should be.
Okay.
If the through the auction process, we have the ability to set parameters that would be that control the level of disruption, but there could potentially be a change that does impact the some either prescription that's covered for an employee or a network that would be changed potentially through that. That is something that we have the ability to evaluate side by side so that we can make a decision and certainly take into consideration any disruption to an employee.
So the claim process would remain the same as well? Or is there a potential for an additional level of of claims?
I'm not sure.
So if I currently have a prescription, let's say it's at Walgreens and and the district renegotiates a prescription to Walmart or something, I have to then move that prescription. And then, let's say there's a benefit reimbursement and I have to request that claim that still stays through the current process, this wouldn't be like another party that would have to be involved in that assessment or valuation?
Sure. So we we have the ability to run the auction with all of the same terms and conditions that we have. It would just be a more competitive market between the PBM providers. However, again, we we could, based upon, you know, right now, the PBM that we have, there could be another one that a pharmacy offers more competitive rates if you fill them through, you know, a specific pharmacy as an example. Those are all decisions, though, that we will have to evaluate and to bring to the board. And certainly, that is something that we look at, is to make sure that whatever we're doing, that we have the most consistency for our members. But we're also seeking the cost savings that they're typically reporting. I will say that our insurance committee saw this. Their their reaction was this seems to be a no brainer. There is very, there's no risk to the district in doing this, given that we have the ability to cancel the contract if we don't see savings equal to the amount of fees. The other thing that I will say is I, and I think the thing that was most attractive about this company, number one, is their complete independence and the the software solution that they offer, to be able to to readjudicate any of the claims. But it's also their auction process. They have a blind auction so that they do two phases. They're able to seek people's, the company's various proposals for the services. And then they put it out a second time and say, here's what's out there. Again, it's blind with the companies not named. But they say, now give us your best and final offer so that we are getting the most competitive rates with that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion carries. That then takes us to the Illinois Association of School Board Policy Reference Education Subscription Services. And it's a discussion item for information. Dr. Small?
At previous board meetings, it has been discussed that the IASB offers a policy service that will create a policy system for a district that mimics their policy system. District two eleven currently has approximately three hundred and forty policies, while similar high school districts using the IASB system have approximately two hundred policies. After reviewing the details of the IASB services, the steps outlined in the board write up are recommended to maintain the integrity of the current policies of the District two eleven board while beginning a five year policy rotation cycle in line with the IASB rotation cycle.
Any questions in regards to this?
No question, but I I would like to see a more aggressive schedule than a five year rotation, considering the condition of some of our policies.
All right. The press does it a five year cycle, correct?
Yes.
The recommendation is not to adopt the press.
It's to adopt the press cycle. So we would follow their five year cycle, which would last every five years. We would be touching every policy along the way. At the end of the fifth year, you would see the board be able to see any policies that are unique to District two eleven that are not in line with the press policy and be able to make decisions on those. that are unique to District 211 that are not in line with the press policy and be able to make decisions on those.
I still stand by my, you know, desire to see it a little more aggressive, maybe a four-year cycle so that at least during the term of a board member, they would see all the policies.
If the board would like to do a four-year cycle, we're going to have to potentially add on additional staff, and we will pay additional fees because we're not following the cycle that comes in with recommendations with the IASB. That is one of the things that we looked at when we looked at converting it, is the intensity of converting the cycles over.
If you would like, and there's consensus from the board, that can be an item for, a topic for future discussion of going instead of five years, going to four. So you could bring that up at, when we get to that point. And then we'll see if there's consensus. Okay, any other questions in regards to this? All right, then that takes us to Board of Education Committees. And again, this is a discussion, and we asked Dr. Small to bring some information to us. Dr. Small?
The board has received information regarding standing committees. I would suggest that the policy committee bring forth to a future board meeting changes in BCE, board appointments to allow for standing committees, which is currently not contemplated on the current policy. JFCO, Behavioral Intervention Committees, to allow for a standing board committee for behavioral adventure committees, as opposed to the administrative committee as the policy currently indicates. And review policy BCBA, board officers, to ensure the clarity of the appointments made by the board president, subject to board approval.
Any questions in regards to that?
If the changes aren't made, we would be out of compliance with the law per the attorneys. Is that how I read that?
The attorneys are recommending that we have two standing committees. Our policy currently does not allow standing committees.
But the state law requires those as committee, board committees, correct?
From the-
If I read the letter correctly. I'm just trying to figure out if our board policy would supersede the state law.
Our policy cannot supersede the state law.
So that's why we would be changing the board policy, and it'll come back to us?
Correct. So I don't think our board policy can prevent us from following state law, but we should align the two?
Yes.
Yeah, we want to follow state law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item is board member expense. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the pre-approval form for future expense reimbursement for Stephen Rosenbloom to attend the Ed Red Annual Kickoff Luncheon Meeting, October 6, 2023, and the North Cook Division Dinner Meeting on October 30, 2023, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, then that takes us to potential topics for future discussion. Is there any topic? Okay, if there is none, then we're going to move on to the committee reports. We'll start with NSSCO. And at your place, I provided you with a copy of What You Need to Know About NSSCO Student Transportation. The business manager, Julie Jellic, is presenting information to the NSSCO board members, giving them some highlights about what NSSCO is, what they do, because there are some new board members on NSSCO. And I thought you may find this interesting in regards to the transportation. As far as 211, we provide the transportation for our students. Fremd High School was gracious enough to host a transportation meeting and safety facility, a safety here, meeting earlier this year during the summer. They talked about, you know, transporting the students with special needs, dealing with some students with behavioral issues, you know, answering any questions that they could in regards to our, some of our special needs students that are being transported, and how they arrive at the school, and, you know, how we get them home. They appreciated everything that Fremd High School was able to do. It was a great interaction, and they've done this for the last number of years. I don't know, Dr. Small, if you wanted to add anything? So we've got that. We talked about, we talked about Sunrise Lake and the outdoor education. They gave us a presentation. They looked at their NSSCO goals. If you've not had an opportunity, I would strongly recommend, you know, going out to Sunrise Lake and taking a look at the facilities. They've grown with so many possibilities for the kids. Our member districts go there. Our students, you know, have been there. They do it for staff developments. There's a lot of different opportunities available. They look for student outcomes, social-emotional learning, supportive collaborative and person-centered learning environment. They want that to promote the growth for the students. They look at transition services. They also look at collaborative partnerships. So they do a lot for the students, and they try to work with everyone that goes out there by doing evaluations to see, what did the teachers, what do the teachers want for their students prior to the students coming? What did they, what was their experience? And then afterwards, what can they do differently or better? And what would the teachers like for the following year? So there was a lot done that was there. So those were some of the highlights from NSSCO. And then that'll take us to Ed Red. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for approving my expenses associated to the annual kickoff luncheon coming up on October 6. On September 8, I attended a webinar on bills associated to bullying, racism, and the new tenure rulings. From a bullying perspective, the, there's bills associated that's effective, that was effective June 9, around notification and data associated to bullying. It amended the Bullying Prevention School Code, adds some new categories of bullying. It says that policies need to be updated to correlate to the new bill around bullying by January 1, 2024, and that we're required to notify, that it requires notification to involve, to the involved parents and guardians of, involve students within 24 hours of any reported incidents. Regarding racism, there was, there's a Racism Free Schools Law, Senate Bill 0090, that's effective in August 2024, associated to data collection. And then we already talked a little bit about the teacher tenure changes. And it also, we discussed that the deadline for non-renewals is April 15, not 45 days. So April 15 is the specific deadline. I thought that was interesting. And then we discussed some legislation that Ed Red is advocating for. One is that they're trying to get legislation around prohibiting school buildings as polling places. So I know that's been discussed for quite some time in our state. There's also, they're advocating with Representative Fred Crespo on funding requests for school districts who are enrolling new arrivals to get some funding support for those school districts from the state level. So those were some bills and legislation that were presented at the Ed Red meeting, at the Ed Red webinar.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Community and Family Services Report. Ms. Barron?
To my knowledge, we have not met yet. So I'll be looking for that email pretty soon, hopefully, to see if we have met.
No.
Oh, okay. I thought I missed something. So I'll be reporting on that, hopefully, at a future board meeting.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to the District 211 Foundation Report. I was not able to attend. Dr. Small?
As a reminder, the Realtors Against Homelessness will be having their fundraiser on September 27 at the Schaumburg Golf Club.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to the Equity Report. Ms. Cavell or Mr. McGowan?
If I may, I'd jump in here first, and then, of course, give it up and make a difference comment. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend in person, as I received coverage. However, I did follow up, get an update about that, and certainly report back. Attendees stated that they were very pleased with the progress that the district has made, particularly in areas regarding social-emotional learning, some of the areas that were previously referenced in tonight's presentation in the Equity Goal. And the expansion of reading materials and relevant classroom materials more reflective of our diversity. Areas where more progress is desired include the course recommendation process, shifting in the mindset of faculty and staff, especially around enrollment and advanced coursework and dual credit work. Certainly made mention of the importance of individual connections and relationships between students, staff, and engagement of parents and families as part of those connections. And yes, I believe that those were the main things that were covered. Mr. McGowan, if you had any additional comments?
Mr. McGowan?
No, no additional comments. She got it.
All right.
For the community's information, the next meeting will be November 14.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that takes us to Facilities and Building Safety Report. Mr. Bradley is not here. Dr. Small?
He was present, but I will have Lauren summarize it.
Our Facilities and Safety Committee met on September 7 at Hoffman Estates High School. Attendees included Mr. Bradley, Dr. Small, district architects, and several school and district administrators. We started the meeting with our architects, providing the committee with an update on the 10-year facility assessment being conducted, which we will share at an upcoming board meeting. They discussed their general findings across our schools and described the working nature of the document that's being prepared. The committee then had an opportunity to review and comment on design plans for the Hoffman Auditorium, the Fremd Art Department, and other improvements planned, including roof replacements, mechanical equipment replacement, applied technology cooling, PA system upgrades, and paving work that's planned for summer of '24. And following that, we can transition to discussion on safety initiatives across the schools, which included an update on the new safety and security personnel.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Boards Report. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Very briefly, and I know members of the school board are also members of IASB, so you can see it on their website. But there is a webinar on September 28 at noon entitled Gender Identity and Student Supports: What Board Members Need to Know. So it might be something, if you're interested in learning more about equity, diversity, and inclusion from a board member perspective, it's something you might want to attend.
Thank you. All right, then that takes us to Student Wellness Report. Ms. Barron or Mr. McGowan?
I can go. So our committee met yesterday with Dr. Hauser, who is our Director of Instructional Improvement. She was the facilitator of that committee. And then also in attendance was our Director of Communications, Ms. Holmes, as well as students from each high school and staff from each high school as well. The staff were either from our wellness, from our wellness group or from our student services groups as well. And I was in attendance as well. We had a really good, productive meeting, and we started off with identif, or they started off with identifying goals. Some of the goals that students and staff identified was, some of the themes were student voice and choice, eliminating stigma, communications, you know, areas of communication, website navigation, and then how we advertise our services to our students and our families as well. One of the things that a lot of the folks in the room kept saying is an area of growth is our communications. So I know it was really nice to have our Director of Communications there to hear some of that feedback and take it back to her as well. So we also reviewed the Panorama Survey results, and they reviewed the results for each of their high schools, and they identified areas of growth and areas of strength. Some of the strengths that they identified were self-management, supportive relationships, growth and mindset, connection to community. And some of the areas of growth that they identified was emotional regulation, sense of belonging, mental mindset as well. And at the end of the night, each of the high schools came up with a goal that they want to focus on and bring back to their school committees. And I think they said, I may have gotten it wrong, but for the first time ever, all of the schools wanted to focus on sense of belonging, and they're going to focus in different areas in their school and how to bring that sense of belongingness.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Nailed it.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, then that will take us to our upcoming events.
Madam President, I have a couple of things to add to upcoming events. Just wanted to mention, as I have in years previous, that the Schaumburg High School VIP Parent Boosters is having their craft fair this coming Saturday from 10 until 4. And two weeks later, the Conant Boosters are having their craft fair, October 14, from 9 to 3. Both of those not only serve as a great opportunity for people to see and purchase crafts and other things, but also they're very good fundraisers for those organizations, so.
Thank you. All right, and our next board meeting is going to be October 19. I have to read the motion in regards to closed session because we do have it published here. But I believe we probably will not need to go back into closed session. But the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and matter pertaining to an individual student. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No, the motion fails. Then that takes us to retirement requests. That the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Janice Kluci effective May 2027, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Then that takes us to the next item, and it is that the Board of Education decides that student number 508680 is expelled from Township High School District 211 for two calendar years from the date of this action for violating board policy JFC. The duration of the expulsion is based on the safety threat and disruption that would be posed by the student's presence in the educational environment. For these same reasons, the expulsion of the student from the learning environment is in the best interest of the district. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. And since there is no other business to come before the board, then the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned at 9:37 PM.